Meeting will please come to order. Adequate notice this meeting was provided in the following ways. Notice published in the Courier-News. Notice posted on the Bolton Board of the Municipal Building. Notice made available to the Township Clerk. Notice sent to the Courier-News and the Star Ledger. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Weissman?
Here.
Mr. Tilley?
Here.
Mr. Patel? Mr. Regio? Where is he? Mr. Blount?
Here.
Mr. Hidaka?
Here.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Here.
Mr. Ellie?
Here.
And Chairman Cahill?
Here. Will everyone please stand to salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the Republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Caneely, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Yes, we have two changes tonight. Anyone here on MSN Pharmaceuticals on Duke Road that will be adjourned until December 11th with no further notice by the applicant? On NDK Realty, South Washington Avenue, that is being adjourned until November 13th with no further notice by the applicant. Those are all the changes I had.
Thank you, sir. Let's go to item number six, 25-ZB-43V. Tilakraj, Sony?
Good evening, Mr. Cahill. Board members, board professionals, my name is Tim Arch. I'm an attorney licensed in the state of New Jersey and I'm here representing Mr. Sony. This is an application for 321 Hamilton Boulevard. I believe that Mr. Sony was in front of your board previously, representing himself on this application, and that he provided testimony. And my understanding is that the board had some concerns with specifically one of the variances that was being requested. So just to remind the board, this is a application for an addition to an existing single-family home in the R7.5 zone. The purpose of this home addition is because Mr. Sony is getting older. His son and his son's wife and two children intend to move into his home to help care for him. And obviously, it's important for Mr. Sony to still maintain his independence and privacy, and they don't want to be obviously on top of each other all the time. Mr. Sony's son, who I believe is here tonight, and who I believe is the one that testified earlier, he works from home, which is very convenient for caring for his father, but also obviously requires adequate workspace as well. So the variance at issue that the township staff was concerned about, as I understand it, is the request for lot coverage. The original plans that were submitted proposed a 23.9% lot coverage. And admittedly, that's a significant departure from the permitted 20%. So in response to the board's suggestion, my client went back to his architect and we resubmitted revised plans with a proposed coverage of 22%, which I think represents a substantial reduction. But even with that reduction, I understand that your board professionals requested the coverage be reduced more. And I certainly respect your opinion, Jonathan's opinions and the other professionals' opinions. But one of the things that I also respect so much about this board, and I've seen it more times than I can count, is a willingness to come to a reasonable compromise. So briefly, I would like to see if I can convince the board that 22% is acceptable. I'm also going to show my hand a little bit and let you know that my client has worked really hard with the architect and we're willing to compromise. And we think that we can reduce it even further to 21.5%. So if you're not willing to allow the reduced 22%, I think 21.5 is a reasonable compromise. But I have three points that I want to make briefly, and hopefully after I make those points, you'll see things our way. And so with that said, I am going to share my screen. And I will certainly be brief. Does everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay. So this is the left-side elevation architectural of the 22% revised plans. The point that I want to make is, so this is the left side, which means that the front of the building, the front of the house that's facing the street is to the right. And as you can see, that's all the existing home. And all of the addition would be in the back, the rear of the home. And actually, the roof line sits underneath the peak of the existing home. And the reason that I wanted to highlight that is because, quite frankly, from the front of the house, you're not going to see any difference. It's still going to look exactly the same from Hamilton Boulevard. All the new massing is going to be in the rear of the home. And so quite frankly, it's not going to create any additional, you know, bulk or mass that you can see from the street. So it's actually going to look exactly the same. I also want to show you a Google image, which I will mark as Exhibit A1. And this is just a Google image of the home as it is now. We marked out the 25-foot rear yard setback and gave a rough estimation of what that is going to look like, what the addition is going to look like in terms of where the home is now. Again, as you can see off of Hamilton Boulevard, you certainly won't be able to see the addition. But I also want to highlight, if you look at the home that's directly to the right, that has 311 right there, it's really in line with the other sort of massing of the home and the additional outcroppings of that home. But if you look to the house that's also right here to the left, 323, this one is actually a little bit, sticks out a little bit farther into the rear yard than what we're proposing. So certainly, it's consistent with that coverage. And then if you look at this big boy over here at 335, this is quite a bit larger than what we are proposing with our coverage. So the reason I'm showing that is just by way of explaining that obviously the homes that are right there, the size of this house is going to be consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. And then finally, and I know this, and I understand this, and my client understands that each property is unique. And so, you know, what the board has done in the past on one property certainly doesn't set any sort of a precedent for what it's going to go in the future. But I do want to just note, I did compile a few resolutions from this board over the last year or two. And I just want to point out, we have one here, I believe, we have one here. Oh, sorry, that's not the first one. Let me go all the way up to the top. There's quite a few. I'll go quick. So we have one here, I believe this is a typo, the mass 30%. I think that's supposed to be 20%, but this home was 26.83 building coverage that was granted. The next resolution is indicating 24% building coverage. There's another one that's 22.7% building coverage. There's one here, 23.4% building coverage. One here that is 31.9%, which quite frankly, that's, we're not asking for that. That's too much. So we would not ask for 31.9%. One here, 22.9% building coverage. Again, another 24.7% building coverage.
I think we get your point, sir.
So again, I understand each one is different and that doesn't mean...
Absolutely.
But yes, but the board has granted these in the past. And so we just, we asked that, we've really made steps to try to do, you know, in the spirit of what the board asked us to do, to come back and compromise. And I think 22% is a fair compromise. But as I said before, if we have to go down to 21.5%, my client is willing to do that as well. So thank you and I appreciate the time to make our case.
Thank you, Tim. Jonathan, just for clarity for the board, could you touch on some of the specs that we have on this? The side effect?
Sure. One of the reasons that is leading to the staff's opinion, just we have the floor plans that's been shared with the board. There's family room on the ground floor, family room on the second floor. The home office is quite large. There's also a large exercise room. So it's our opinion that some of these could be reduced in size and potentially more savings from the building coverage can be gained there.
Okay, thank you. You know, in the interest of compromise, I kind of understand where you're coming from, Tim. I was comfortable with 20.5 to give you for your overall percentage. I think 21 might be okay, if that's good with you. I can read the table and I can read the board and I think 21 would be acceptable this evening.
I would have to ask, I believe my client is on.
Take your time.
That's, Mr. Sony, if you can unmute. You've heard the board's position. It sounds like they would be willing to compromise. Is it 21?
21.
Maybe 21.5? Did I hear that, Mr.? No, just 21.
No, you...
I'm sorry, I thought I heard 2.5 in there. Perhaps you can rework it a little bit to reduce it down to the 21%? Is that something that you would be comfortable with? Or, I'm sorry, what was that, Mr. Sony?
Yes, yes, sure.
Okay. Thank you, we would be agreeable to compromise at the 21%, Mr. Cahill.
Okay. Do we need to put this off to, do we have new drawings submitted or anything, Jim?
Jonathan, to see whether or not he thinks he can do it after the resolution or whether...
I'd love to see the drawings first, if that's possible.
Okay, so Laura, we're going to have to put this off, I guess. You're muted, girl.
I know, I was trying to get the button. Higher today. If you want to, I mean, November 13th is the next meeting.
Is that okay, Tim?
Yeah, can I just make one request? That if, once we show the drawings, if Jonathan is satisfied with that, would it be okay if we did not appear at that? If we get the okay from Mr. Mizrahi? I just don't want to charge my client again for an appearance for, if it is just something that is that the board...
That's acceptable to me, if that's the, Jim, is that cool?
Yeah, as long as you talk to Mr. Mizrahi ahead of time and make sure that there are no issues, because if there are issues, you're going to be here to address them.
Right, it would be conditioned on Mr. Mizrahi being satisfied with the plans and...
Yeah, of course.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, any other members have any questions about this application or comments? Hearing none, I'm going to open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any comments or questions about this application?
No one, Chairman.
Okay, I make a motion to approve this application.
I thought you were adjourning it until next meeting.
We're adjourning it to November 13th, I apologize.
I like what you're saying.
Anybody here on the Sony application, it's going to be adjourned until November 13th, 2025, with no further notice by the applicant.
Almost got me, Tim.
It's there, you can't take it back.
There's two more apps, you might be able to get me in the next couple of minutes, though.
All right.
Okay, let's move on to item number seven. 25-ZB-73V, 605 Fairview Avenue Properties.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, board professionals. Lawrence Sacks, on behalf of the applicant. 605 Fairview Avenue Properties. It's Block 1405 Latem.01, located in your R7.5 zone. The applicant is before you tonight, seeking some bulk variance relief to construct a second-story addition and a covered front porch. We noticed for three variances, two of them, I believe, will be eliminated based upon recommendations from your staff. And so really, the only variance that we're going to be seeking is the front yard setback, 25 feet required. We're looking at 15 feet for the porch and 8.5 feet for the front steps. The variance for encroachment into a municipal right-of-way will actually be eliminated because one of the recommendations from your staff is to remove the fence, and we will do that. And also, the variance for driveways being paved with a hard surface, we're going to pave the first 20 feet of the existing stone driveway as per the recommendation. So to eliminate that variance, Mr. Chairman. So it's really just the one variance? I have really one witness here this evening. I have Mr. Kermit Hughes, who is the architect, who can just very briefly explain what's being proposed. And also, the principal of the LLC, Mr. Dwayne Eddings, is here, if anyone has any questions. So if we can get Mr. Hughes and Mr. Eddings unmuted and get Mr. Hughes sworn in, we'll go forward.
Mr. Hughes, are you present?
I am.
Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address, please.
Kermit Hughes, 185 Myrtle Street, Somerset, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Mr. Hughes, if you can just briefly give the board some of your educational and professional background to be qualified as an architect.
Okay, I am a graduate of the University of Florida, where I received a master's degree in architecture. And I am licensed in New Jersey, registered architect, and also registered architect in Florida.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes, proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hughes, just briefly, if you can describe what's being proposed here in terms of this expansion?
Okay, so is it possible to share a screen?
Please do.
Can we see the screen?
Yes, we can.
Blue, okay. All right, so I've put in color the actual building locations. This is the main portion of the house. And this is a garage that's out there. And then this is the porch that's sitting a little bit closer than it needs to be. And then the steps that are here. The fence that he mentioned, it's over here. And I'll give you a look at that building. This is the existing building. And this is the existing porch. And the idea is to add to this a second floor. Everything's sitting on top of existing footprints, so no change in footprint for the process. And then on this existing porch, we want to bring up a couple of columns and add a roof over that porch. I'll show you in elevation what that wants to look like.
And Mr. Caneely, I believe this was provided with the submission.
Okay.
Okay, so yeah, so here's the porch, here's the addition, and then the roof that will go on top of that. That second floor that's being added, we'll go to floor plan. That second floor that's being added. We'll come up these existing stairs. This is the existing first floor. We'll come up the existing stairs. To the right, there'll be a bathroom and a bedroom. And down to the master, our primary bedroom. And then it has a bath and a walk-in closet and a bedroom. So there will be three added to the second floor. And then the ground floor existing, there was already a bedroom there.
All right, so we'll have a total of four bedrooms with obviously a very nice renovation to an existing dilapidated structure. So really, the only variance then that we're seeking then is not necessarily for the second-floor addition, it's for the front porch, which is encroaching into the front yard setback. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. And one of the comments in the staff report dated October 16th, 2025, is in site impact, talks about the proposed side yard air condition shall be fully screened from the street and neighboring properties with the fence and/or landscaping, and we will agree to do that?
Yes, we will.
All right. All right, and then the covered, the second point, the covered porch shall create an encroachment into the front yard setback of 15 feet. There's a request for us to discuss the need for the covered front and rear porch. I'm assuming the need for the covered porch is to protect anyone from the elements as they're getting into the house. And secondly, it would provide obviously a sitting area outside as well?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. And Mr. Chairman, I think I've already mentioned the existing fence. Comment three was the existing fence to be relocated out of the township right of way. We will do that. And the last comment was that request to pave the first 20 feet of the existing stone driveway. And we'll agree to do that. And by doing that, we'll eliminate those other two variances. So the only variance then that we're seeking is for the front yard setback. Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything further. Certainly, if there's any questions, we can entertain those.
Jonathan, did you want to elaborate at all?
Yes, thank you. The only thing I want to add for the record is the required setback for this is 25 feet. So this is going to be a 15, they're requesting a 15-foot setback, where 25 is required.
Got it, okay.
Less if you include the steps.
Right, right. Is there any wiggle on that?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I didn't hear you.
Is there any wiggle room on that?
Well, I don't think so, because we want to obviously, we obviously want to get the second floor in there, and that's obviously going to sit on top of the covered porch. I mean, as you can see now, the house is really, you know, almost a knockdown. But, you know, we're trying to save the actual footprint itself, so.
Understood, understood. Any other members on the board have any questions or comments? Hearing none, we're going to open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions or comments about this application?
No one, Chairman.
Okay, close the public portion, and I would make a motion to approve this application as is. Can I get a second?
A second.
Thank you, call the roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tilley?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
We'll memorialize this at our next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Caneely, good seeing you.
Take care.
Have a good night, gentlemen.
You too, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to item number eight, 25-ZB-72V, Annor Academy Incorporated.
Thank you, good evening again, board members, board professionals. Tim Arch, attorney licensed in the state of New Jersey, here representing Annor. Also present tonight is Shomel Malik, who is the director of the Annor Academy. You may recall, we've been in front of the board with Annor a couple of different times. If you do recall, over at the 399 Hose Lane property is where they're currently in the process of trying to construct their new school space. In the interim, we were in front of your board asking for a temporary use to allow that school to take place at 1,000 Hose Lane, which is the Muslim Center of Middlesex County. And you graciously did grant us that ability to use that last year for last year's school year. The construction is still not done. There has been unfortunately delays, and a lot of that has to do with there being multiple entities involved on that property, both the property owner, the Annor Academy. There's another use that's there as well, and all of them are essentially mixed together. There were two applications there at the same time, and there was a lot of, I think, confusion caused by that on the part of, I'm not saying it's part of the township, I'm saying I think at the part of the ownership entities and my clients. In any event, they are pressing forward to get that done. But in the meantime, they need to operate at the 1,000 Hose Lane property for the time being. This is, you did grant this last year. My understanding is that there were no complaints or issues with them operating out of the campus. We did have testimony at the time about how it would work in terms of pickup and drop-off and circulation, and all of those would still be in effect. So essentially, what we're asking for tonight is just a reaffirmation of that temporary use for this year, so that we can have that six months to try to get 399 up and running. And so, as I said, Mr. Malik is here. He can answer any questions that the board may have, but it's essentially a reaffirmation of the application that we were in.
Understood, understood. Mr. Caneely, is there a precedent on the record that we can't do it, we can't approve it this time, but then after that, it's got to be finalized?
The temporary use permit permits two six-month temporary uses. This would be the second one. The ordinance does not permit a third.
Okay, we recognize that, we understand that.
Thank you for the clarification, appreciate it, Mr. Caneely. Any other members on the board have any questions or comments? Hearing none, we're going to open it to the public. Laura, anybody in the public have any comments or questions about this?
No, Chairman.
Okay, close the public portion. I grant them another six months. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tilley? Mr. Regio? Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
We'll memorialize this at our next meeting and send it to you.
Thank you. Let's move on to item number 10. 24-ZB-69/70V, Venture Net Properties LLC.
Good evening, members of the board, board professionals. My name is Tim Arch, I'm an attorney licensed in the state of New Jersey. I'm here representing Venture Net. Likewise, we've been in front of this board for, I believe, two temporary uses before on that property in order to start doing some interior fit-outs. That was a little while ago. We are not here for any extension of temporary uses. This is the actual site plan. So we're asking for preliminary and final site plan approval to construct what will become eventually the headquarters of my client's company, which is, let me just pull up my notes here, which is a company called Home by Nature Corp. And that's a building materials company that specializes in furniture, flooring, wood doors, lighting-related home improvement products. And it focuses on wholesale and professional trade customers like contractors, interior designers and builders. And it's all imported materials. So we're asking for a use variance and a couple other bulk variances tonight in order to change the campus at 425 Hose Lane into a office slash showroom slash storage and warehouse all for this company. I will be honest with you, it is not going to be built probably anytime soon. And the reason being is that, as I said, this is an import company, and they import a lot of their stuff from China. And so when they originally put this plan together and we put all those plans together, and this is their goal for the site, everything was going fine, and then tariffs. So the tariffs are a huge concern for my client. And so I'm just being upfront that if you were to grant this, it's probably going to be unfortunately three years before things settle down a little bit. And this can be utilized the way that they want it to be. But we want to get the approvals, we want to present it to you so that when and if the tariff situation does subside, they're ready to go and start their business there. So by way of saying that, you may actually see us come back before you for intermediate temporary uses, if there are other uses in businesses that we can, that can sort of help get us through that tariff issue. But tonight is the full site plan for the ultimate usage of 425 Hose Lane. So we do have a couple witnesses tonight. I have Rob Murray from Menlo Engineering. I have, who else is on? Where'd he go? I have Jim Kyle, he's our planner. I have James Chen, he's our architect. And I think I have, yes, Jay Troutman on, who is our traffic engineer. So unless there's initial questions of me, we can start with Mr. Rob Murray.
Please, proceed.
Mr. Murray, are you present?
Ah, he is, I see him there.
Mr. Murray, can you hear me?
You're muted?
Ah, I don't think he's muted.
He's not muted.
I'm sorry, I had to switch lights, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, we can. I need to swear you in, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
I do.
Thank you, your name and address, please.
Robert Murray, R O B E R T M U R R A Y, 261 Cleveland Avenue, Highland Park, Indiana.
Thank you.
Mr. Murray, if you can, if you can please just go over your qualifications and your licensure, so the board can accept you as an expert in engineering?
Yes, I graduated Stevens Institute of Technology in 2017 with a bachelor's in civil engineering. I've been a professional engineer for four years now, and I provided numerous testimony throughout New Jersey, including Biscataway.
Thank you, Mr. Murray, please proceed, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rob, if you can, just take us through the site and if you can highlight some of the areas where we are asking for variance relief.
Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
This is our existing conditions exhibit, which is an aerial photograph of the site and its surroundings. And just to orientate my drawings tonight, both of my drawings will be pointing, north will be pointing up.
And we can mark this as A1 as an exhibit.
A1.
Thank you. The site better known as 425 Hose Lane Thank you. Um, the site better known as four twenty-five Hose Lane is designated as lot three point oh three of block six thousand three in the township of of Piscataway. The property is located to the east of Hose Lane, approximately six hundred feet north of Sydney Road. Access is also provided off of Hose Lane. Overall, the property is approximately twelve point eight acres and is located entirely within the BP one zone. The site is surrounded to the north by commercial and educational uses, to the east by recreational uses, and to the south and west by commercial uses. As it exists today, the site is currently a fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-six square foot office building with six hundred and twenty-seven parking spaces on all sides of the building. The site also includes a small shed on the northeast side of the site. Now, if I can present our overall planned exhibit, and uh if the board wouldn't mind, I would like to mark this as exhibit A-two. Um, this is a colorized rendering of our site improvements with an aerial background. The applicant is seeking to demolish a portion of the existing parking area to construct a forty-six thousand two hundred and forty-nine square foot building addition on the east side of the site. This will be used for product assembly, shipping and receiving. And the addition will be connected to the existing building through a uh building overpass. The site includes circulation around the the proposed building with a minimum of twenty-four foot, twenty-four foot wide two-way uh drive aisles on all sides except for the east side, which is a twenty-foot wide, one-way um on the east side of the building. This is enough to provide safe and adequate circulation. The site parking includes three hundred and ninety uh physical spaces with sixteen EE credits for a total parking count of four oh six spaces where four four thirteen is required. These spaces will be nine by eighteen. The building will also have four dock positions on the east side of the the building. Um, these will be fourteen by forty-six feet where twelve by fifty is required, so a waiver is being requested. On the north side of this, of the building, there will be six uh truck, truck stores, truck parking spaces that will be twelve by forty-six. And the site will utilize uh existing onsite utility to uh bring utilities to the to the proposed building. Site improvements also include lighting and landscape. This landscape includes thirty-five deciduous trees, sixty-one evergreen trees, sixty-nine shrubs, three hundred and twenty ground cover, all this needing the uh requirements of the ordinance. Lighting include, lighting includes two pole-mounted lights that are twenty-five foot high, fourteen wall-mounted LED fixtures ranging from sixteen to twenty-six feet high. Uh, this provides a minimum of point three foot candles and an average of point seven foot candles in the parking areas, which provides safe and adequate lighting meeting the township standards. The site is considered a major development because it deserves more than an acre. Uh, we accomplish all stormwater management requirements by a reduction in impervious pavement and motor motors motorized surface. Um, and this meets all the NJDEP stormwater management requirements. Variants in in existing non-comformities include uh accessory building, rear yard, uh existing non-comformity. Um, the setback is fourteen feet where fifteen is required. Waivers include two-way aisle width of twenty-four feet, twenty-four foot is where twenty-four foot is proposed, where twenty-five foot is required. Uh, the loading length is forty-six feet long where fifty is required. Bulk variance include rear yard setback where fifty-five feet is proposed where eighty is required, and a parking variance where forty, four hundred and six spaces are provided where four thirteen is required. And lastly, a a use variance as previously stated by Tim. Uh, I've read the board's professional letters. Um, we have no problem with the with satisfying these comments, with the exception of comment five of the uh township of Piscataway Engineering and and Planning. Uh, comment number five, we we respectfully ask that the uh the applicant only be required to repair it uh the damaged asphalt and curbing and not mill and overlay the entire site and repair all site curbing. And that concludes my testimony.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Murray is available for questions.
Yes. Uh, Jonathan, you wanna touch base on some issues here with the site impact?
Uh, sure. I, from my site visits out there, I I think if we were to just repair the asphalt in pieces, it's it's gonna look like a patchwork. You're putting in a significant investment by uh proposing this assembly building warehouse structure. Uh, so it, in in our opinion, it makes the most sense to mill the entire surface course for the site to make sure that it's uh safe and uh cohesive.
Uh, if I can, if I can make a suggestion, since we don't know if this is, we don't know when this is actually gonna occur, it's quite possible that the stat, that the condition, it's not gonna get better. It might, it may deteriorate by the time we actually do this. So it may certainly be necessary that that full mill and paving be done. Uh, I would just ask, and we've done this in other applications, that if we could have it indicate that if the professionals are willing to do a site visit at the time that we are proposing to to do the construction, uh and if there are any areas where maybe there could be some cost savings uh that they would suggest that, but if they feel that a full mill and repave and curb uh replacement is necessary, we we would do that in the board's early uh professionals discretion.
Okay, Jim, would we wanna handle that through a developer's agreement or condition that?
I I can certainly include that as a condition in of approval.
Okay, and maybe we can.
Correct, we have done that in other applications.
Correct. And and to be honest, like I said, it uh the it's not gonna get better on its own. It's all, it would only get potentially worse on its own. So uh I imagine that uh it probably will need a full mill and repave uh at a certain point, but just.
Okay, Jim, um, Rob, can you, can you speak on the fiber optic conduit at all?
I'm not aware of any uh existing fiber optic uh.
We're we're requesting it be installed along uh Hose Lane. Uh, comment six on our report.
Yes, we will, we will agree to that. Uh, I I do believe Rob indicated that the only thing that we had any issues with was was number five. Uh, we will agree to the uh uh to everything else in the uh uh uh, I believe, the twenty-two comments in the uh tri-party uh staff report letter. Uh, one thing, one thing that I will note, and uh and uh several of those comments have to do with uh current uh uh site uh conditions in terms of uh things outside, uh uh things under tarps. Um, I can certainly report that uh, I believe ninety-nine percent of all of the uh issues that the township has pointed out have been abated and have been cleaned up. The only thing that is still remaining on site is a little bit of scaffolding, uh which will hopefully be gone within the next uh week or two. Uh, so uh I know, I know the board, when they look at those comments, they think uh they think the worst, but we do wanna indicate that that it's actively being improved upon, uh and we anticipate that it will be fully done to the township's satisfaction within a week or two.
And I'll I'll agree. I also took a trip out to the site. It's it's a uh, there's been an improvement with the site condition. Okay, um, I'll I'll hold any of your comments for later professionals.
Okay, any other comments from anyone on the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions.
Sure, John.
The outside lighting, you're proposing twenty-five foot high poles?
Correct.
Are there any other poles on site?
Uh, I believe there are.
Are they twenty-five feet high?
Without, without, I I don't have any uh information on the height of these poles.
Can we agree that they won't be, the new ones won't be any higher than the old ones? 'Cause I've been to the site, I don't think they're twenty-five feet high. And I didn't get a ladder out and measure them, so. I stay off ladders now.
I was, I was gonna say, I think there was some some bad blood there between you and Mr. Chapman.
We could certainly work with the board's professionals to to um provide adequate lighting without uh without exceeding um without being a detriment to the existing lighting.
But we just don't go, they're no higher than the existing. The other item, do you know whether or not your client needs them on all night long?
She's, oh, it will leave them all night. Um.
Uh, I but I think I can ask, answer that, Rob. Uh, we will, we, we do know some uh anticipated hours of operation. Uh, there will be no overnight hours of operation, and so I think uh uh as far as, I think only the uh the necessary lights for security purposes would need to be on overnight.
That's fine.
Thank you, John. Any other members of the board have any questions?
Just one other thing, the landscaping, John, you already looked at, looked at over?
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a good improvement, especially with the screening from the uh the recreational element adjacent, so, yeah.
Not that great right now. Okay.
Yeah, one of the things we are agreeing to in that staff report is to work with the uh with Jonathan to, you know, make sure that the that the landscaping is acceptable.
Perfect.
No other questions, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, thank you. Um, any other comments from anyone on the board for Mr. Murray? Okay, put on your next expert, Mr. Arch.
Okay, uh, next I'll go to uh Mr. Jay Troutman, who is our uh traffic expert.
Good evening.
I'm here.
Okay, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, your name and address, please.
Uh, Jay Troutman, McDonough and Ray Associates, one oh five Elm Street, Westfield, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Uh, Jay, if you don't mind, uh if you can please uh put your qualifications and licensures on the record.
I believe Mr. Troutman has appeared as a traffic engineer before this board on prior occasions.
Yeah, but you don't know what's in between.
You can proceed, Mr. Arch.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so Jay, uh if you can, you've analyzed the site. If you can please just uh go through your uh your expert analysis.
Yes, uh, from a traffic impact standpoint, uh, we're repurposing an existing site that previously operated as office space. This actually results in a reduced traffic impact due to the change to warehouse and showroom space for a lot of the site. Um, it's about a hundred trip decrease on a weekday morning peak hour, about ninety trips on a weekday afternoon peak hour. Um, in my review of the of this particular tenant's operation, um I would think that their their operation's gonna be even lower than what the ITE would uh predict. Again, another favorable uh traffic matter. Um, two existing driveways on Hose Lane, those driveways have adequate uh design geometry, site distance and capacity uh for the site-generated traffic movements. Uh, the onsite traffic pattern is adequate for the site-generated vehicles to safely access parking spaces and loading areas, and the uh onsite parking supply is also adequate uh for the proposed tenant.
Uh, Jay, real quick, um, I know that we had asked our client to provide some uh anticipated truck and vehicle activity. Uh, if I can just get your confirmation that uh that I believe our client indicated approximately three to five commercial truck trips uh a day uh for about maybe twenty to twenty-five weekly uh trips. Is that uh, is that what you recall?
Yes.
And is that, and and I believe you a- a- uh answered already, but that's significantly lower than the uh the ITE estimates?
Yes, that's that's lower than a generic IT warehouse.
And and I believe they also indicated that the majority of their trips would be box trucks uh and cargo vans, but there'll be the occasional uh a forty-foot container truck.
Right, that's correct.
And again, that's a, that's a a lower expected impact than uh what the what the ITE sort of generics uh would would anticipate, correct?
Yes.
I have no further questions for for Mr. Troutman.
Any other members of the board have any questions, Mr. Troutman? Hearing none. Let's uh move on to your next expert, sir, Mr. Arch.
Okay, our next ex- expert is uh Mr. James Chen. He's our architect.
Mr. Chen, are you present?
Yes.
Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Your name and address, please.
My name is uh Wu Chen. People call me James. Twenty-two Millstone Row, Princeton Junction, New Jersey. And I'm the principal of uh JWC Architect Engineer.
Uh, Mr. Chen, I believe you've been accepted as an architect in front of this board before. Uh, I would ask if the board wants to know any more of your credentials or if they can, or if they will accept you as a.
No, let's just proceed at this point. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chen, if you can, please just uh uh go through your architectural testimony, and I'm gonna ask you a couple of questions uh more about the operation, because I know that you've uh discussed that with our client.
Okay, can I share a screen of the the floor plan?
Please do.
Can you see the plan?
Not yet.
Okay.
There we go, okay.
There it is.
Okay, the proposed building is a one-story uh rectangle-shaped structure with the forty feet, forty-two feet, by thirty-four for the structure bay. It's a pretty regular. Um, when we first initiated this layout, we are very sensitive to the surrounding, how this presumed bulky warehouse could be impacted from the street level. What we have decided is to make the building lens to be aligned up with the existing buildings. So from the street, there's no, it's pretty much no exposure. We also set up the building uh at the thirty feet as as what the manufacturing and the packaging, the building height, and no higher than the existing building. And we also treated this building facade as very compatible to the existing office building, so it doesn't looks like a play, a building addition out of place. Uh, we uh tried to use the similar building color, the panel, to make the the outside look uh uh as a uniform as possible, so it looks like a road together. We have no changes on the traffic inbound and outbound. Let me go to the actual layout. It's a one big open space with uh two side of uh bathroom and the utility. And the building had connection, the entrance to the existing office building, well, it's necessary to move some product in and out. Other than that, it's just one big open space. It will be um um steel structure with a metal deck roof. We have the full loading portion here. This is, this is the exterior elevation. As you can see, we try to make it looks compatible to the existing office building, which on this side. And there is a big canopy separated the both building, but make the the some protection for the people going inside, outside to this, between these two building. Um, I'm open for any question you have.
Uh, thank you. Uh, James, if I can just ask real quick, uh because I know that you uh confirmed uh with uh with our client, uh any of the representations that I made about the nature of the business, uh about what it is that uh they do and the and the um they intend to do? Uh, was I, was I accurate in my representations?
Absolutely, yeah. The, I I do wanna point out that the company, uh Home By Nature, their signature philosophy of that uh of the product is a green building. They're very environmentally uh cautious, and all the, all the products that represent, it's it's a, it's a high environmental standard, and it's all pre-manufactured it in overseas, and they ship it here to be assembled and to be displayed and then and and sell it to the uh a professional.
And uh what I indicated about the showroom was that it's not gonna be for general retail use. Is that correct? It's gonna be for uh appointments of uh contractors or uh wholesale purchasers. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay, and I think that uh uh just to touch upon the hours of operation, because I did uh mention that before, my understanding is that the office will be Monday through Friday, nine AM to five-thirty. The showroom is Monday through Saturday, nine-thirty to six, and that's by appointment for trade customers. And then the warehouse is Monday through Saturday, eight to five. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay, and that there's no need for overnight operations and no Sunday activities except for if there's limited maintenance that needs to be done during off hours?
That's correct.
Okay.
Jonathan? Just, Mr. Arch, just, yeah, you have site impact uh questions?
Yeah, what 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 can be said about the the noise generation? If we're gonna be having this business open on Saturday so close to that recreation element, um, just curious what what we anticipate on that front.
I, I will say, in my professional opinion, it will be minimal. Uh, because the product is not gonna be really banging, cutting here. They're just the, it that, it's like a furniture pieces that they're putting that together. There's no actual uh cutting and uh constructing over there. There's no actual cutting and constructing over there.
So it's prefabricated components that are then being assembled, but are not being.
That is correct.
Okay.
Thanks, John. Any other members of the board have any questions or comments?
I have just, I have just one quick question. I didn't see any outdoor dumpster areas on the plan. Is all the waste going to be held inside the building?
There was there was existing shed on the corner. Let me share this plan again.
I believe, if I remember correctly, I believe there is an existing dumpster on site. We would certainly screen that appropriately per ordinance.
I would think the nature of this business, there will be a lot of packing material that's going to have to be dealt with.
Yeah.
Let me, let me share this.
You're up, Mr. Chen.
Okay. This is, this area in the corner.
Right.
There's existing shed, storage shed.
What's in it now?
I do not know. I didn't get, it was locked. There's some shade was locked. I didn't get a chance to see what they have inside secretly.
I mean, I would think there's going to be considerable packing material based on shipping it from overseas here. I mean, we could, we could basically assign someplace inside this new building as a recycling section. Or figure out what the needs are going to be. I would think that little shed in the back is it might have been adequate for the office uses, but I don't think it's adequate.
Yeah, it looks a little small.
We can certainly agree that we will, that we can designate area inside, internal trash storage. Or if, if, if any revisions need to be made on the site plan to indicate a area, well, we would also, we would appropriately screen them as well. As long as they don't trigger any variance, would it be possible to indicate in there that if we do need any outdoor, it would be reviewed by the professionals and as long as appropriately screened and doesn't trigger.
I'd be very comfortable with having an indoor space. And if you need to change that sometime in the future, then you can deal with that.
I think, I think that would be fine then. We would, we would agree to maintain that inside. And if that is not feasible, we'll come back to the board.
We just don't want this stuff piled up over the corner someplace.
Oh, understood.
Thanks, John. Any other members have any question? All right, Tim, put on your last expert.
Last expert is Mr. Jim Kyle. He's our planner.
Mr. Kyle, are you present?
Yes, I'm here.
Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
I do.
Your name and address, please.
Sure, James, last name is Kyle, K Y L E. It's two East Broad Street in Hopewall, New Jersey.
I believe Mr. Kyle has appeared before this board as a professional planner in the past. Thank you, Mr. Caneely. You can proceed, Mr. Arch.
Thank you. Jim, if you can, please just give the board a bit of your professional opinion.
Sure, so just to let the board know what I did in preparation, I've visited the site, I've reviewed all the plans and the application that was submitted. I've reviewed the township master plan and ordinance as well as the memos from the board's professionals. Also visited the site as well. I'll kind of dispense with the background and the site setting since Mr. Murray already covered that and we'll jump right in. So we do require D1 use variance here. There is an office component to this use, however, the wholesale aspect, the showroom and the shipping and receiving and assembly is not permitted in the BP1 Business Professional Office District. So we do need a D1 variance for that. As Mr. Murray covered, there's also a rear yard setback for the new structure, eighty feet is required and fifty-five is what's proposed. There's a bulk variance for the existing accessory structure, the shed that we were just speaking about, fifteen feet is required. And fourteen feet exists. And then we also need the variance for parking. So let's talk about the D1 variance on the use first. So we're required to demonstrate both the positive and negative. On the positive, I believe the public welfare is promoted because the site's particularly suited to the use. We have an existing large office building. It's in a non-residential zone. It's vacant. Can readily be repurposed for the applicant's intended use. Just converting portions of the office space into the showroom space works well for them. We also have a mature site with good screening to surrounding properties, including and probably most importantly, screening to the park directly to our east. So the new building that's proposed at the rear is about thirty feet, thirty-four feet with the parapet. So it's not going to be visible from Hose Lane as Mr. Chen pointed out. And then we have mature screening along the back line with the park. There's a pretty good line of white pines there. I was happy to see when I was out there that they haven't done what white pines typically do and lose branches on the bottom. They're pretty full and dense. And then we're also supplementing that with some additional plantings on the north end of that. As Mr. Arch indicated, we've agreed, as Mr. Chadwick pointed out in his memo, there might be some holes that we need to fill and we'll certainly work with professional staff to make sure that's achieved. The resulting appearance here is much like the surrounding sites. So many of them have multiple buildings. So it's not really going to result in something that's inconsistent with the area visually. We also have a good separation of grade from the park down to where the new building will be situated. There's about a six or seven foot difference there. So combined with the fact as Mr. Chen said, this building is low, lower than the existing office building. We think it makes a good site for this addition and then for this use as well. Really based on Mr. Troutman's traffic testimony, this is going to be a significant reduction in traffic versus a straight office use. We have adequate access and it's a good regional location for use like this. So I think the site is suitable. It also promotes purposes of the MLUL, notably purpose A to promote the general welfare. So granted, the relief in this case allows the applicant to repurpose this vacant site and ensure that it remains productive. Generally, as we all know, the office market in Middlesex County has continued to suffer post-COVID. Data recently published by Colliers, and when I say Colliers, not the engineering firm, the real estate arm shows that there's currently about a twenty percent vacancy rate still in the South I-287 submarket. Overall, New Jersey sits just under twenty-five percent. So here, this is, it's a great idea to repurpose this building. And what it does is not only make this useful, but it also helps the overall vacancy situation in the market. So it makes other straight office buildings that could be re-leased more attractive and helps on that front. So an approval in this situation, as we've described the use tonight, I believe looking at uses that exist around the site and those that are permitted in the zone that this use is compatible. So while there is a storage component here, this is not a warehouse and distribution use. As you heard, the truck traffic that we're expecting here is between twenty and twenty-five a week. So certainly less impactful than some of the typical warehouse and distribution uses that we see in the region. And then also purpose G to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. Based on the site suitability testimony provided, I think this can be considered an appropriate location for this use. We also have to demonstrate the negative criteria. The first part of that is that there's no substantial impact to adjacent properties. As Mr. Troutman noted and in his traffic report, the use proposed will generate significantly less traffic than just a straight office use. Even with the additional floor area that we have proposed. We have a maximum here of about twenty-five employees across all aspects of this use. So that's significantly less than has been on the site previously. So we don't expect there to be a significant amount of traffic as Mr. Troutman hinted to. The aspects of this actual use are much less than what the IT would suggest in the data that Mr. Troutman pulled together. As I said, the site, despite the assembly use and the small warehouse proposed, it's not going to generate a significant number of truck trips in any given week. Maximum of about twenty-five. That's mostly going to be box trucks and cargo vans and we'll have the occasional container from overseas as components are brought to the site. But that, that doesn't represent a significant number of trips. There's really no residential uses abutting the site. The new building will be adequately screened from the park and again, we're willing to supplement that as suggested by staff. And then the height of the building and that grade differential really means that it's not going to dwarf surrounding properties or buildings. So overall, I think there's not a substantial negative impact to adjacent properties. Second part of the negative criteria, we have to show that there's no substantial impairment to the intent purpose of the zone plan. And we have to meet the Medici enhanced proof, which is that the grain of the relief is not inconsistent with the master plan. And that we can reconcile the fact that this is not a permitted use here in the zone. So the purposes of the ordinance in section twenty-one-two mirrors the purposes of the MLUL. And as I noted, it's my opinion, the purposes A and G are promoted here. While there's no purpose statements for individual zones in the ordinance, we do have a two thousand five master plan and then the twenty-twenty reexamination report. Couple of notable goals from the two thousand five master plan to ensure the harmonious interrelationships of the various land use activities throughout the entire township and with neighboring municipalities. And to provide for the continued expansion of the economic and tax base of the township. There's also a notable thing in the twenty-twenty reexamination report. It was more of a challenge that was identified and it was adaptive reuse of existing sites and buildings compatible with surrounding land use. Really, when you think about it, that's what we're doing here. This is a relatively low impact use. It's a good way to repurpose this building in the site that has been vacant. And we'll meet that goal of really adaptively reusing this. This is more of an issue now than ever with you know, the office vacancies that we see in the market in the state. So this is a great way to repurpose this site and building. So based on the purposes, the goals and objectives, the grain of the relief here is not inconsistent with the intent purpose of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. There are goals that are directly on point with the current application and others that are present are not substantially impacted by this proposal. So on the Medici enhanced proof, again, not inconsistent with the zone plan and zoning ordinance. And there is adequate support in the goals and objectives for providing adaptive reuse of this site. As far as reconciliation, I think the board can find that, you know, the site is suitable for the use. The changed circumstances of the office market in the county and the state really demands that we find adaptive reuse for buildings like this that have gone vacant. And this is a good way to do that. So I believe that's the best way that we can reconcile the grain of relief in this case. Moving on to the bulk variance relief for the rear yard setback. On the positive, I think this promotes the general welfare because it really enables the adaptive reuse of this campus. The rear is really the only location where this storage and assembly building could be put. So given the existing improvements, and the new building is really integral to the overall use of the site. The building also proposed, excuse me, replaces a significant amount of motor vehicle surface on the site as Mr. Murray had said. We're reducing impervious coverage, but that reduction in motor vehicle surface is important from a stormwater quality perspective. Because we're getting rid of surfaces that vehicles will drive over, replacing it with a roof that the DEP considers to be clean runoff. So that's a benefit here in the pavement reduction. On the negative, as I noted, the overall height of the building with the parapet is thirty-four feet. We have that grade difference from the park. That's really probably the most sensitive receptor to this proposal. And we also have that existing vegetation along the rear that we're going to supplement, which should do a very good job of screening this from the adjacent park. This relief also won't substantially impair the intent of the standard. While it's not expressed in the master plan or the ordinance, setbacks are generally geared towards providing adequate light, air and open space on the property as well as for those adjacent. I think here, given the combination of the change in elevation and the existing screening means that we will not substantially impair that intent. On the accessory structure setback, again, this is a shed that is existing. Our assumption is there was either a permit or a site, part of a site plan approval granted. So this is an existing structure that maybe was just built one foot too close to the property line. So at this point, the shed's well integrated within the site. It's situated on a pretty substantial concrete pad. So it would be particularly difficult to relocate this to a conforming condition. We're really talking about a departure of one foot. On the negative criteria, again, it's a very small structure. The only impact point is really to the park and we are proposing some additional screening in the back there. There's also a fenced area. There's additional vegetation that's present on the park side of the fence. So overall, it should be well screened. I don't think it'll be a substantial impact to the park. And again, the intent of these standards is making sure that we're providing adequate separation. And I think given the screening that we have and that we're also installing, that intent will not be substantially impaired. Last one is the parking variance. I think this promotes purpose A of the MLUL, the general welfare. Based on the employees, the number of employees that I noted that we're going to have at the site, we really don't have a substantial parking demand. So here, I think the elimination of parking, as I talked about, the paved surfaces that has environmental benefits. So that's, that's really the benefit of the grant of this relief. It's not going to substantially impact adjacent properties. The real issue with a parking reduction is generally people seeking parking on other sites and then walking back to this site. We have more than adequate parking on the site and that really is going to be unlikely, given that we have hundreds of parking spaces and we're going to have less than thirty employees at the site. There will be, you know, as we talked about, people visiting the site for the showroom, but that's not expected to be a significant demand for parking. And as far as the intent of the standard, obviously the intent is to make sure that we have adequate parking on the site, based on the characteristics of the use. We have more parking than we would probably ever need, even though we do require relief for it. So I don't think that intent will be substantially impaired. Mr. Chairman, that's all I had in the way of direct. I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Jonathan, did you want to jump in at all?
I don't have any comments at this time. I know we're likely going to need a new set of drawings and potentially a developer's agreement. So I'm going to hold my comments until we get the revised back.
Got you. Any other members of the board have any questions or comments? Hearing none. Mr. Arch, you want to summarize?
Well, this board knows it's generally my policy not to, not to give a summation after good planning testimony. So I will, I will leave Mr. Kyle's, I think, very good justifications as the last thing the board hears.
Fair enough. Any members of the board have any questions or comments for this? Hearing none, I'm going to close. I'm going to open it to the public. Anyone in the public, everything, questions or comments? Laura?
No, and Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Arch, I'm not prepared to vote on this tonight. I'd like to afford the rest of the board members and myself an opportunity to go out to the site. So I would ask that we could put this off for, I would say, what do you got, Laura, next month?
Yes, November thirteenth.
Yes, is that acceptable to you and your client?
Yes, as I said, we believe that we are ninety-nine percent complete of cleaning up the site and that should be done well before the next meeting. And, and I would certainly want the board to see that we are true to our word, that everything is, is brought up to to the township's liking. And it occurs to me that I believe I'm going to be here on November thirteenth anyway for NDK. So if I could just ask, do we need all of our professionals to be present on that day for any additional testimony?
Mr. Caneely? It's up to the applicant. If you do not wish to bring your professionals, you run the risk that questions may occur from the board members based on their site visit, but that's a calculated risk that you take.
Understood.
Okay.
And I believe that you will generate some goodwill with the board if that cleanup is complete by the time of the November thirteenth meeting.
Absolute, understood.
Good, thank you. And I would urge the board members to, at your convenes, get out to that site, four twenty-five Hose Lane. Take a look at the progress that they're making and get back to me with some feedback. It'd be great.
All right. Here on the venture net properties, it is going to be carried to November thirteenth with no further notice by the applicant.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, everyone.
Let's move on to item number twelve, adoption of resolutions from the regular meeting of October ninth, twenty twenty-five.
First resolution is Heather Pham, which you voted to approve. Mr. Patel? Mr. Oregio?
Yes.
Mr. Blunt?
Yes.
Mr. Heyduka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Next is Antoinette Rouse. This was a withdrawal. I will need a motion and a second on that before we call the roll.
I'd make a motion to accept the thank you.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Oregio?
Yes.
Mr. Blunt?
Yes.
Mr. Heyduka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo? Mr. Midrondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Next is Leanna Commandis, which you voted to approve. Mr. Oregia?
Yes.
Mr. Blunt?
Yes.
Mr. Heyduka?
Yes.
Mr. Midrondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Next is Yahara Gonzalez, which you voted to approve. Mr. Patel? Mr. Oregia?
Yes.
Mr. Blunt?
Yes.
Mr. Heyduka?
Yes.
Mr. Midrondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Final resolution is Jorge Mina, which you voted to approve. Mr. Oregia?
Yes.
Mr. Blunt?
Yes.
Mr. Heyduka?
Yes.
Mr. Midrondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
That's all that I have for this evening.
Thank you. Item number thirteen, adoption of minutes from the regular meeting of October ninth, twenty twenty-five. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Item number fourteen, adjournment. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, guys. Once again, thank you for your volunteering and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Happy Halloween, everyone.
Happy Halloween.